I pledge allegiance to a flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Begin the meeting with a moment of silence. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
I'd like a motion to accept correspondence in the read file.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public forum, now's the time for anyone to speak who wants to speak about something that's not on the agenda or bring it to our attention. Okay, Chairman's report, just a couple of things. I was informed by the Department of Health that there's been a rise in tick-borne disease in Whitman. So just don't panic, I was told, but just be careful around when you're outside, as far as ticks and mosquitoes are concerned. I'd also like to mention that on Friday I'll be meeting with Laura Kemet and Beth Stafford, the Chair of the School Committee and the Chair of the Hanson Selectment. We'll be meeting someplace in this building to start talking about what timeframes make sense for our developing our budget for next year. And I received an email today also from Sean. He and Mary Beth had a meeting the other day and they talked about budget timeframes and some really good information and what he gave me, and I'll be passing that on to them as we try to discuss what kind of a schedule makes sense for the different lanes that have to be filled for our budget. I'm preceding the meeting because I'm shy. I'm proceeding the meeting with Laura and Beth with a meeting with John Galvin, who knows an awful lot more about these things than the nitty-gritty than I do. So we'll be doing that. And then the last thing I'd just like to mention is that I'd like to remind or announce to people, and I'll probably announce it again, is that on the 29th of August is the annual vigil, opioid vigil over at Massasoia Community College to remember and recognize those people who have overdosed, who have died from the use of drugs or alcohol. It's been going on for a number of years. I can recall when it... And I encourage you all to go. We give money to Whitman Hanson Well as part of our budget every year. They do an amazing job. The schools do an amazing job. Our police and fire departments do an amazing job in supporting people who want to, who deal with the opioid problem. We need to get citizens and parents more involved than they are. In some other towns, they are very involved. In Whitman, not so much. But our public entities have been very involved and very effective. I'd like to encourage you all to go to that vigil. It's at 6 o'clock at night.
Six.
On the 29th, Massasoia. I can remember the first one a number of years ago and they put up on a screen photographs of people who had died. And there were between 20 and 30 people who had died at that time. They played music behind the pictures of the people. And I think they only used one side of a CD. Last year, there were close to 200 to 300 people who had died. And it took like four full CDs of music to watch those pictures. It's moving. The... It's a moving experience and I recommend it. You should put that on your calendar. And that's it for me. I'd like to have a vote to rescind the Class II Auto Dealer's License for Rivers Custom and Classics LLC on the premises located at 605 Bedford Street, Unit 9. The business is no longer operating. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to act on the resignation, accept the resignation of Veteran Service Officer Sarah Lansing, effective June 22nd, 2023.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say that I'd like to thank her. She was probably one of the better veteran officers that we've had working for the town. We've had many in the past, but she was very good at what she did.
Yeah.
And it was a sad loss for the town, but she's moving a little bit closer to home.
That's right.
So it's very good.
So with regret?
With regret, yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Also act on the resignation of Laura Andrade as a member of the Council of Aging.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Like to vote to declare a table located in the auditorium balcony as surplus material. Do you want to say anything about this, Mary Beth?
There is, just I think it's a large desk that's been up in the second floor balcony for quite a while. It's very heavy and the custodian feels that there's no value to it at all. And so they'd like to dispose of it.
Okay, is there a motion to get rid of it?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Laura. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to consider the request of Timothy Grenow to be appointed to the Bylaw Study Committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm really thrilled that Tim has come forward for this. He's a guy that's been around a long time and is going to be a valuable member to the Bylaw Study Committee for sure.
Indeed.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to ask for a motion to appoint Fred Small to the Bylaw Study Committee. And again, Fred Small, we all know Fred Small, he's been around for a long time. He's been an active school committee member among other things and another great addition to the Bylaw Study Committee if we vote him in.
Yep, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Vote to renew the fortune teller's license for Star's Tarot card. Just about the time when Dan says, "Does she know it?"
Right. She has to know what we're going to vote because she's holding her card up saying, "They're going to vote in favor."
Vote to renew the fortune teller's license for Star's Tarot cards on the premises located at 418 Bedford Street. Subject the receipt of law renewal paperwork and the license fee. Is there a motion?
Let me see. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
It was in the cards. Vote to accept a donation of $7,500 from the Copeland Family Foundation Incorporated to be used for the animal shelter. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Beth, do you want to say anything about this?
This is a donation that I believe does come in or has come in for the past several years for $7,500. I believe that Laura may be abstaining from this vote where she is the ACO officer, if that's okay. This is from the Copeland Family Foundation and it goes to such great use and is greatly appreciated.
All those in favor? Act on the request of Elaine Morrow on behalf of the Southeastern Philharmonic Orchestra to conduct a free concert on Sunday, December 3rd, 2023, and Sunday, April 28th, 2024 inside the town auditorium. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Chief Hanlon for a line item transfer in the amount of $11,699.82 from line item 739 auxiliary expense line to line item 112, all of the services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Beth, you want to say anything about this?
This is a line item transfer as well as the next for the Police Department. These line item transfers have been approved already by the FinCon. We just need the approval of the Board and this will just help them finish out the fiscal '23 year.
Yes?
I thought this one was denied by FinCon.
No.
Did they correct that or?
No, that was a different transfer that the Board approved for facilities expense. They just wanted additional backup and that is going this evening to them. But the Board has already voted on that. This is separate.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Chief Hanlon for a line item transfer in the amount of $3,000 from line item 585 expense line to line item 112, all of the services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've heard from Mary Beth already. All those in favor?
Aye.
Act on the request of Mary Beth Carter for a line item transfer in the amount of $12,000 from line item number 35 vacation pay for terminating employees to line item 35 unemployment compensation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Beth?
Okay, so unemployment, we have had during COVID and it's across the entire state. It's not just for municipalities. Tremendous amount of fraudulent claims. So Maya, through our insurance carrier, they do have a service where they help us with the or handle what we designate as fraudulent claims. We are asked to pay these claims and then wait for the state to reimburse us. We have had these claims, some of them out there now, you know, for a couple of years and we're still waiting for reimbursement. So our costs for unemployment have gone up significantly. We're constantly flagging any fraudulent claims and notifying unemployment. However, this is the amount that I estimate. They have not billed us yet for the last quarter, April, May, and June. They have been billing us on a quarterly basis and they are transferring to a monthly basis starting in July, which is going to make things so much easier, better for planning. However, I did have them send us out a mock bill, you know, just a manual bill, I should say, for April and May. However, they have no idea what June will come in at. So I just estimated, you know, one of our months, you know, that looks like it might come in at that amount. We could receive a credit. We just don't know. They don't know. But we have experienced, you know, a significant increase and it's all due to the fraudulent claims with COVID. And like I said, this is across the state. I don't know when we will see money. I have asked them for a timeframe for reimbursement and they really can't say. So hopefully though, we'll start receiving a lot of credits for the overpayments that we've had to make.
Yes, Dan, I have a question. What happens if, why don't, if they get a claim for an employee of a town, before they pay that claim, why don't they get a hold of the towns and say, "Have you had an employee by this name?"
So we do receive notification. And in the past, the former town administrator would just withhold those claims and just pay the balance of the unemployment invoice. Unemployment has changed that now. Where the towns or everybody needs to pay that and then wait for reimbursement. But we do notify them immediately.
So let's say, say they get an unemployment claim for someone who worked for the town. So the person actually worked for the town, but they've never been out.
Right.
Because I know, I think, didn't Lori say that she was on one of those claims? They claimed that she was out?
I don't know if she has, but I do know other existing employees. They have come in that way and we have one now that is an existing employee and we have notified unemployment. But we need to pay the bill and wait for reimbursement and it's very difficult.
Is the state paying them before they get notification that that's?
Normally, no. Normally they will, well, one of them, we did notify them of and they are paying the claim.
But it's fraudulent?
We have notified them that this person is on our payroll.
So why are they paying it?
Right. So we're looking into that and I'm trying to balance everything that we have overpaid for reimbursements. And in speaking with our former town administrator, he said, "We don't know when we're going to get it, if we're going to get it." I mean, hopefully, yes, we are. But we're talking about millions of claims. I mean, there are thousands of claims, thousands and thousands across the state. So our unemployment costs have skyrocketed. And that's why we need this transfer to close out this year.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Reluctantly.
And finally, act on the request of Mary Beth Carter for a line item transfer in the amount of $1,762 from line item number 14 expense furnishings and equipment to line item number 35 facilities manager. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mary Beth?
Okay, so that one is for the facilities director who last year, it was as of September 1st, he stepped in as in the role of facilities director. When that calculation was done, and I looked at the detail of it, I could see that what was in the line was $75,000 at that time and what was to be projected for the end of the year was $76,904. And that was, he should have started later. So he wasn't and therefore there was a shortage of $1904 in the line. But in an overtime line, there was a little bit of a credit. I believe it was $14308. So the difference nets out to the $1,762. So it's a small transfer just to make that line balance for fiscal '23.
Any further, all those in favor? And now we're down to Citizen Kane on the strategic plan.
Thank you. Well, just quickly before I get into it, it was, it was actually really helpful for me to go through this and, you know, working with Mary Beth and some of the members of the team to go back and thoroughly look at the strategic plan and look back over the, over the period of time that we've been here and figure out, you know, what progress have we made and where we need to move forward with. And I think you'd be pleasantly surprised by how much progress we have made towards a strategic plan. It is from 2022 to 2027, so it's a five-year strategic plan. And I ask for just this to be put up there because it's just a good summary of the five pillars of the strategic plan. But the specific mission at the front of the strategic plan, I'll read it now just so people can remember it. It says, "To provide responsible, sustainable services by fostering strong community relationships for our citizens, future citizens, and visitors." And the first pillar of the strategic plan is on finances, which really speaks to the, I think, the responsible and sustainable aspect of the, you know, the services that we want to provide to the public. And you can see the initiatives. It says, "What we'd like to do is we'd like to implement financial policy or some financial policy development, a process to inform when and how much new revenue is needed, accurate financial and capital forecasts, and enhance communications with all educational partners." So when I looked at that and then reviewed some of the progress that we've made, it's pretty obvious that we've made significant progress. We have adopted financial policy and used it to guide the budget process. We're still getting used to that, but we have actively done that over the year. We have dedicated funds to contract a consultant who will help us with financial forecasting and enhance communication. As you said early in the meeting, Mary Beth and I and Kathy met with, and Ken, met with a financial consultant and it was excellent. He talked about ways that we can analyze debt further. He talked about ways, a number of ways that we can financially analyze more of what we do and develop a way to communicate that with the public and the Board so we can have more intelligent discussions. So it was excellent. We also, Todd Decouda was hired as the facilities manager and he's done an extensive facilities assessment so we have a better understanding of our capital needs. And lastly, we have committed to working with the schools, again, as you mentioned earlier in the meeting, earlier in the budget cycle and develop that process earlier. So you can see as far as that first initiative, I mean, that first pillar is concerned, a strategic priority, we're definitely making good progress. The second one has to do with public facilities and community infrastructure. And the first initiative on that is the new DPW building. And we were just able to pass that at the town meeting and at the ballot. So there's a huge step for the DPW building. Professional assessment of ongoing facilities, a completed sewer main, downtown infrastructure improvements, and the underground utilities and high-speed internet. So the, I think, again, the facilities manager, Todd Decouda, actively speaks to that because he can assess our ongoing facility maintenance needs actively. So that's a big step in that direction. The sewer main, we recently have an update that the pipes are installed, so that is complete. There is just one hookup, I think, from the pump station out, but otherwise it's fully installed. And they're going to start the pulverizing, pulverizing and pavement process like next week. So that project obviously is, we made a lot of progress on that project. As far as some of the improvements that are currently being made to the infrastructure downtown, I think it's obvious some of the sidewalks that are being worked on. And if you think about the center at 27 and Washington Street, that intersection is being updated. In addition, the technology department, Josh, has looked into a, he applied for a municipal fiber network grant that will significantly improve some of the IT infrastructure that way. So again, as far as that priority is concerned, we've made significant progress. With the economic, any questions? Keep going.
Keep going.
With the economic development, this again speaks to enhanced downtown infrastructure, community engagement and communication of benefits and trade-offs, establishment of a chamber of commerce, and competitive masterwork application grants. For this, I'm going to go through, but I might, I think it's interesting. We've definitely made some progress towards this initiative, but we may want to target some areas in the near future. We've applied for a grant to update the master plan. Now is a few months ago, so that's in the works to update the master plan. Kathy Keefe has also met with Old Colony Planning Council to discuss available grants that will be eligible for in this area and I think there's a couple. So that's actively in development. Justin and Mary Beth have applied for a masterwork grant to cover the town side of the South Ave-Corder project. And that's a significant project. So there's a good chance that we'll have grant money to cover the town side of that project. And then also, we have qualified for a grant for the EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant, which also pertains to the, that area, the train station on South Ave. So that's significant improvement in that area is for sure. Also, a couple of years ago, the Board worked with Old Colony Planning Council to create a housing production plan. And one of the major goals within the plan was to increase the affordable housing to 10% and to adopt more flexible zoning. This again is overlapped with the South Ave-Corder project. So that, that area of Whitman seems to be, when you think about also some of the new businesses that we're bringing into that area of Whitman. So good economic growth, good infrastructure, working with the state to get multiple grants that are going to help us achieve our goals in that area. So I think some big progress. The one area that I think we may, we may want to pay attention to is the establishment of a chamber of commerce. We haven't really addressed that over the past year, but it's something I think in the near future that we could definitely, I would love to play a role with that or if somebody else on the Board would be interested. But I think that is an obvious objective that we could potentially take on in the near future.
Interesting.
The fourth one is improve citizen, improve citizens' experience of interacting with their government. So citizen services. And this is ensuring that all services are accessible, utilize available resource grants, resources, grants in Opera, for instance, foster citizen engagement and enhance citizen communication. So again, this might be an area that we want to spend a little bit more time on in the near future. But one of the reasons why we're working with the consultant, the financial consultant, is so that we can develop material that we can share with the public so that people have a better understanding of the budget and the town's finances. So we certainly have taken steps to address this goal, but it might be an area that we want to focus on a little bit more as well. And then lastly is the schools. The schools, we kind of took from their strategic plan, I think if I remember correctly, and embedded that as part of our strategic plan. And their major, one of their major initiatives, but I think probably their major at the time was the Full Day K. So we were able to implement Full Day K. So that's a big step in the right direction as far as the strategic plan for the schools. There's a couple that they're still working on, the robust related arts, and they would like to align the curriculum. So I think that's still on the back burner for them as far as their priority. That, and they have been recently working on an updated strategic plan that I believe they're going to talk about next month and probably finalize in the early fall. So when that happens, maybe we want to either make a slight adjustment or add an addendum or something like that for their updated strategic plans.
John, thank you very much. What do you, what do you think about doing what you just did every summer at about this time as we go through the strategic plan? Would you, would you be willing to be the spokesperson?
Yeah, honestly, I think that the reflective process of going back and looking at a document that we've developed and then seeing like what progress have we made? And then obviously, like, you know, we've made progress in this way. Now let's just start to focus here. I think it's a really healthy, healthy part of what we should do, you know?
Okay, so I think we should, we should like put that on our calendar as far as, as far as reports. And as long as, as long as Sean doesn't mind doing it, I think it's a little workup. Anybody have any questions?
Excellent report. Sure.
The Brogdon Chamber of Commerce is excellent. Is it, would that be what you would be mimicking, the same type of thing?
Yeah, I've reached out to some, you know, business, business people in town and to see who's had experience on different boards and whatnot. And there are definitely members of our community that have experience on different boards like Brogdon and Abington and that kind of thing. So I think with just a little bit of organization, we could have, I mean, it's going to take a little bit of energy, but, you know, you and I, I'm new members of the Board.
It's immensely helpful.
You know, so, yeah.
I think it's great. I would love to do it with you. It's very helpful to people. I used them a long time ago and it was really informative and they were great. And there was a whole group of people and they were very welcoming and I'd love to see something like that.
Yeah, cool.
So that's awesome. That was really nice work. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is to set the meeting schedule. But we, I think we were originally thinking of the 25th. However, I'd like to put that off for a week if you don't mind. I can't, I'm not available on the 25th. Something I, something I can't avoid.
Mary Beth, do we need, on the DPW Building Committee, do we need something that needs to be dealt with by the 25th? One of the bills, all we can meet, that's just our meeting, right? It has nothing to do with this Board?
Has nothing to do with this Board. Nothing to do with this Board.
Mm-hmm.
So are we okay with the 1st?
August 1st.
August 1st?
Sure.
For the next meeting? And we'll just leave that as the only meeting right now scheduled for August? And if we need something else, we?
Sure. That makes sense.
All business. Vote to ratify the holiday MOA between the Town of Whitman and Whitman Firefighters Association Local 1769 IAFF and who authorize the Chair to sign said agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next is vote to sign the collective arguing agreement between the Town of Whitman and the Whitman Firefighters Association Local 1769 IAFF for the period July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of items. The first being the Camp Alice Carlton update. You may recall that after town meeting, it was agreed to continue the analysis of the Carlton property and that is to continue with the surveys of the Whitman and Rockland parcels and determine if the matter should be pursued further. We are still awaiting the results of the Whitman tract. On Friday, we met with Mr. Monroe and that would be Frank Lineham, Kathy Keefe, and myself of Select Soccer and reviewed the results of the Rockland land. The survey, which they had done, reveals areas of wetlands that would limit what can be developed in Rockland. Select is still interested in the property, but whether it can be useful for soccer fields will depend on the Rockland Conservation Commission. Select's plan would be to lay out fields as outlined on the map provided by Select Soccer, which I did send to all of you. They mentioned having walking trails around the property open to the public that could connect to the Whitman parcel. If this is something we wish to consider, perhaps a long-term lease of the property in Rockland to Select that would permit the town to retain ownership of the land and provide revenue that could be used to improve the Whitman parcel for recreational purposes. If I could just get a consensus on whether the Board would like to move forward with exploring- exploring this option, it would be appreciated.
Anyone have anything to say?
Yeah, on that parcel.
Yes.
It was given, that, that land was given to the town for recreational use?
Correct.
And was it supposed to be strictly for Girl Scouts? Girl Scout camp, or no?
No, at one time.
At one time.
But then it was, after the use of the Girl Scouts, it was, you know, for the town for recreational.
Right, and it really hasn't been used over the years, right?
Not that, you know, anything formal.
Right. I mean, I don't know if anybody's walked there, or, you know, walked it or whatever, but they're gonna continue to have walking. I, I just think if it was given to the town for recreational use, what we, what being asked to do for it is exactly what the family wanted done with that land, recreation, you know?
Sure. Get the, get the microphone. You can, you can speak up there.
I'm sorry, could you say that again, Dan, about the recreation?
Well, if you think that a commercial business? I'm sorry, Eric Jewett, 291 Pine Street. You think that putting a commercial business in on that land is what the family planned?
No, it's, it's recreational, it's, it's soccer field, right?
Soccer fields by a commercial business, sir, correct? Is not this a company that's going to take the land?
Okay, is that right?
Yes, it's Select Soccer, it's a business.
It's, it is a commercial business going in on town land that was meant for town people to utilize, not a commercial business, would be my interpretation.
Okay, same thing. We have, we have baseball fields, right, in Whitman?
Yes, we do.
And parents who want their kids to play baseball, do they have to pay?
I, I'm not sure.
The baseball league, I mean, there's a, there's a fee, right? So basically, it's, you could call it a business, but they're town fields. It, they're for recreational. I, I think paying, uh, different companies.
They're not putting buildings, and they're not restructuring the land. If you go to the top of Beach Hill, it's 185 feet. If you go to the bottom where the Girl Scout camp lands at the swamp, it's 100 feet. That's 180 feet of ground.
I've never been there, so I don't know.
Right. So how are you ever gonna level that out enough without doing major, major damage to the forestry area?
I don't know.
I do, it's, it's gonna be very difficult, and it's gonna destroy anything that's there woodland.
So you suggest you just leave it there and nothing comes of it?
No, I have, I, I have a better suggestion for it, and that is that we need to.
Go ahead, go for it.
We, we, we need to work on green space. I'm sorry, I didn't. So 1988, anybody remember that one? So in 1988, they did a Whitman Open Space and Recreation Plan, and Camp Alice Carlton was part of that plan to make a greens, green area, including the Whitman Town Forest area, to tie it all in together so that there'd be a green strip basically on the northern end of the town of Whitman. And the Girl Scout camp would fit into that wonderfully. As a matter of fact, a portion of the Rockland, Whitman-owned Rockland land abuts the McCarthy Farm, which is the farm that the town of Rockland purchased as conservation. So we could have a walking trail from Rockland all the way up 58 into the forest on that end. So I think the potential of the town utilizing it as green space, as the family intended, would be a much better option for the future of the town.
Okay. How would that get accomplished?
We, we can form a committee. How's that sound? We could have a committee, and we can work on it because I can, again, we can go through all the, all the historical data on this, but everywhere along the way, there's gonna be a committee. Nobody has ever actually brought that to fruition. If you go back to 84 to 86 timeframe, there was a little selectmen conservation committee soiree that did not go well, and so everything just kinda sat.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, the reason I'm saying is that it's land that's been sitting there, I've been in town since 77, so it's been sitting there doing nothing.
Yeah, I would beg to differ with you on doing nothing, so we can talk about that, because those trees there, they certainly do provide a lot of, a lot of use to the town, don't they?
The trees?
Yeah.
Yes.
We, we get, we, we get oxygen from that, we get photosynthesis, all of those good things that, that help clean the air, okay, that's one. There are people that hike throughout there, okay? I've, I've spent 50 years with Alice. I know Alice well. I can tell you every nook and cranny out there, okay? Right down to the swamp.
Eric.
Yes.
I've actually, I used to run Pet Locks, so, and I redid that all, and I used to ride out there all the time. I 100% agree with you. I hope maybe we can figure out a way to do that, because Peaceful Meadows is now, you know, obviously moving on, and I respect that, and I, I loved their business for years, but I can't change their decision. Also, there is a lot of other land that's come to attention that's, you know, being donated for different things, and we don't have a lot of green space. So I'm glad that you brought that forth, but the trees do the oxygen, but also the animals live there, and I, I cannot ever bring two hats to the table, but I'm just gonna say that every community, no matter who you are, you're not, not naive to that fact. There is no more land for the animals. So I appreciate you bringing this all to our attention.
Hey, thank you, Eric. Marybeth, you were saying you wanted the board's consensus about whether or not to continue talking about this?
Whether or not the board would like to.
You weren't presenting?
I'm not presenting anything. Whether or not the next step I think would be Select Soccer to, this has to be approved by, through Rockland, through their conservation committee, but is it something that the board would like to continue exploring? It's not anything that has, there's no decision.
I think we, we obviously have a couple of points of view here. Eric's point of view and Dan's point of view, and I, I think what you need from us is the permission, if you want to call it that, permission to continue working on it. Taking into account what Eric has been saying, and also taking into account what Dan has been saying, and finding out more information from Rockland and from Select Soccer about what can be done.
Absolutely, and a lot is its contingent upon Rockland and the conservation committee. So I mean, that's their next step. It's not like any of this is, is real at this time. It's just, do you even want to pursue an option of leasing, possibly leasing land for a long-term lease? It's still the town's land, and yet it's for recreational space.
And do you know what Rockland's gonna do? Do you don't know, they don't know?
I don't.
I, I just saw land sitting there and no, I didn't think it was being used, right? Thank you very much for enlightening me. And I was just saying, well, something for kids to do, yeah. You know, if it, you know, improves the kids be able to play soccer and stuff like that, it, it helps the kids, but apparently, I didn't realize that there's people walking there. I've never been up there, so I don't know.
Yeah, Sean, Sean, no, that's okay, Sean.
I appreciate Mr. Jewett for bringing this forward at town meeting, and also today. I think you certainly won me over. I feel like the arguments that were made by you and other members of the public as far as really wanting to keep this in like, you know, open space, conservation, green space, is really what I would like to see happen with it. I don't think there's gonna be more information that's gonna like alter my mind that way unless they wanna put a, they wanna clear the forest, and they wanna put in soccer fields, so.
And there are ways to make money with land.
Through the chairperson.
Sorry, chairperson.
Okay. Marybeth?
Uh, yes.
Is there, is there a, a plan to cut down all the trees so that soccer people can have their fields?
None of that has been discussed, but they, they wanna put in some hard courts, you know, for the, well, soccer fields, and just what I had sent, synthetic turf fields, hard court, a small playground area, and a parking area. And that's, this is preliminary, of course, and it's just something that might be an alternative for the town to, you know, have some proceeds that come in that could go towards the Whitman side. So I don't know if this is something you wanna continue and make a consensus on this evening, or wait till there's a full board, or, but it was just, we met with Select Soccer and to move forward. I don't think that we should without the board, you know, saying, find out more. And that's all this is at this point. Explore the option further.
I, I'd be in favor of exploring the option further, but I'd like, I'd also like to, to take Eric's point of view in mind as you do it. And so you'll have to figure out a way to, to do so.
So I think the first thing is.
Isn't gonna happen tonight, it's not.
Oh, no.
No, I, I just.
We're not gonna leave all the trees the way they are tonight. We're not gonna decide to do that. We're also not gonna.
I'll be changing any of the trees that you're trying to take down.
We're also not, we're also not, we're also not gonna decide to.
But I would like to address a few quick things. The, the land's had dormant for how many years? Since 1984. Suddenly, it's brought up at town meeting to, one, accept the land, which is great that the town finally did accept it, but the second thing was to lease or sell. That was clearly spelled out in that article. This doesn't pass the smell test. There's something not right here. It, it's being pushed through rather fast. I think we should take a step back and form a committee of town people that would decide what we do with the land, rather than let it go off to commercial. I, I think the intent of the Carlton family was to leave it as natural as possible and not put in parking lots and soccer fields. I think the wooded area was the intent from Mrs. Carlton. They didn't have children, and they were very interested in making sure that children had places to play. They also wanted the churches to be able to go cut greenery for Christmas, so we know what their intent was. Clearly, it was to be a wooded area, not to be a parking lot and soccer fields.
All right. How about your constructing a committee?
Absolutely.
Look at this. And this, without, I don't want to shut the door on the Select Soccer idea at this point.
I'm sorry.
I don't want to shut, I don't want to shut the door on that yet.
On this issue?
No, I'd like you to continue exploring it.
Okay.
But I think what I'd like you to.
Hi, I'm Gloria Knox. I live at 149 Washington Street in Whitman, Mass. I am involved with Camp Alice.
Excuse me, please, I was talking to.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you talking to her. Sorry, sorry, Marybeth.
That's okay.
Sorry, Cal.
No, no problem, no problem, Gloria. Yeah, I, I think Eric's, Eric's point of view needs to be.
Absolutely.
Needs to be part of your, your discussion.
Okay.
As well, and it's, there's nothing being rushed here, Eric. These guys that came in to, to suggest to us that they really wanted to lease or buy the land, that was a long time ago. That was a while ago. It was.
I understand that, but at town meeting, we were gonna accept and sell in the, in the same breath, and that, that's, that's what's concerning to me.
Okay, okay, well, that's, that's been, it's been a big time out on that.
Okay.
And this would need to go in front of town meeting ultimately, if it ever were leased or sold. So it's not like it would circumvent the town meeting process.
Okay.
You know, that's, it's not like a deal, you know, something would be done.
Right.
It has to go in front of town meeting.
My other thought would be that if, if we are trying to generate revenue, why would we not put it out for bid rather than go with the first people to knock on the door? That, that's, again, another problem that I'm seeing with the, you know.
That process would take place.
And they're the only people that have come for, they're the only people that have come forward.
There's, I, I, there's a couple of other people in the past that have come forward. I can drag out that list at some point if you'd like, but.
It would go through that process.
So let's, show the, show the, show it down, slow it down a little bit.
Okay.
Certainly appreciate that. The future children appreciate that. Thank you for enlightening us.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Yeah, Sean.
This would complement the development of the master plan as well, you know, because the master, the master plan would address open space and zoning and that kind of stuff, so all kinda fits together with that, you know, bigger conversation, I think.
And may I say something?
Yes.
There are many grants that are available for these type of projects, because land is very scarce. So we could find a lot of different things that we could do.
Conservation preservation fund is out there. There's all kinds of funds if we wanna.
The Boy Scouts, the Boy Scouts are very eager to, may I speak now?
Yes, please.
All right. So I have lived in this town forever and ever, and my mother was very active in the Girl Scouts in, in Camp Alice Carlton. I also was the owner of Oakdale Farm and was the renting person there, and leased it from the Girl Scouts. And then I was in charge of managing the camp, Camp Alice Carlton. Dr. Carlton and Lulu Carlton, his wife, wanted that land very much to be kept usable for children to be able to go and camp and see nature. Boy Scouts are very, very active. They learn Eagle Scout badges, and this would be a fabulous project for them to get involved in. And there is many, many good opportunities for people and young people today to come off the computer and go outside and get into nature and enjoy the beautiful land that was given to us by Dr. Carlton and his wife. And their intent purpose was for the children. But with that, it's opened up to parents also. It could be a beautiful camping area. It could be an area that is good for walking trails, like you said. My daughter was at Pet Locks Farm for many years, and she rode through that property all the time. Her name is Jennifer Knox. It's Cruzel now. She is equine specialist for Perina now. She has a big job. Just got back from Michigan. So I know that the land has been used. Now, that was in the late 80s, early 90s. So it wasn't way, way back that that land was in being used. And my son-in-law went and cleaned out trails, did some surveying work, and moved trees, and made things look good up there so people get through, and children could go up and walk through there and play. And so there's great, great potential there for this town to do a green deal, and that would be a beautiful, beautiful site. It's very accessible. The road goes right up beside Dottie Conlin's house. It's a beautiful road. It used to be well manicured, so you could take a big school bus right up that road, and there was a big turnaround up there. So there's camping things that come about. Girl Scouts could get involved, the Boy Scouts could get involved. There's so much that could be done. Eric's done a lot of research. I lived it. I was there. I lived it. My mother lived it, and many people in this town lived there, and many, many people that are now probably younger than me, not maybe as old as I am, but they all could tell you about Camp Alice Carlton and all their fond memories. And today, if you even go up there, you'll find there are some rocks that still have kids' names on them. So it's not like something that's just been thrown away. It just hasn't been developed, and it hasn't been used. When my daughter was there in the late 80s, early 90s, they were using it. They made a nice riding trail around and went up and through Rockland, can go right through and up into Rockland. So there are great possibilities, and Eric's got some fabulous ideas, worked very hard. And I could tell you more and more history, but I won't bore you anymore. But I think that he's on track with a conservation committee. Get your Boy Scouts involved. What wonderful projects for kids. Get them outside, get them doing things, so they're not just always on the computer, or always just playing their games. It's good for them. It's good for adults to be able to have a place that they could go and walk and see the beautiful. You'll see birds, deer, all kinds of things up there. It's a gorgeous place. I hope there's no bear, though. There was a bear in East Bridgewater. We don't want any bears up there. So I, I just hope you'll think again before you just jump into something, and I, I think you are. Thank you, God, for doing that. And just take a step back so we can look at what we can see for our children and our grandchildren. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria.
Well, I think you, you have the sense of the, of the room as well as the sense of the committee to do some work with setting up a committee, maybe.
Setting up a committee, sure.
I'm thinking about this some more, what Gloria, what Gloria was saying about Boy Scouts and getting people off to their machines.
I know.
That'd be a good Eagle Scout project.
Pretty good argument.
Good Eagle Scout project, cool soccer field.
Okay, thank you. You have some other things to say?
I did. I have one other. The Cultural Council update. The Cultural Council has added a family night to this year's summer concerts lineup on Thursday, July 27th at 6:00 PM. It's a drumming circle open to all ages at the town park, and the Cultural Council would like, would appreciate using the town hall if the weather is bad. If, and we've done that in the past with all their other concerts. This is just an added one, and we'd like to extend the same offer if the weather. This is just an added one, and would like to extend the same offer if the weather's bad, that they could use the town hall.
Okay, is there a motion to allow that?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Be a second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.